Dan is in the air headed for Turkey. It's dangerous place. Well, may I ask the seven o'clock story on this will ask the call the order and roll call please.
Alex, consent.
Here.
Andrew, sound. Mary, time here. Phil Heisen. And the Morse here. Eddie Kane.
Here. Stand out the pledge of allegiance. Unfortunately, it's particularly like the United States of America. We do a lot of police things for my nation. If you're anything, if you're really going to do that, it's a small one.
Nothing's frozen. If you're here to speak publicly tonight, please sign in on the sheet, the assignment sheet, so we know how many we have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. More than three, yes.
Okay, uh, meeting has been called order for five minutes approval of the agenda. Uh, we'll go to consent calendar, which is this will be a judgment of approval of the past minutes. Lot of research and then the approval of financials for the state of the twenty twenty four, which I'm guessing all that is in the back or somewhere. Uh, here motion to approve the consent calendar, etc.
I have a correction.
On the minutes, the minutes, do we do that after?
So what now?
Do we do the corrections for the minute before after? What you got a correction, I'll go ahead here on how.
Well, the only correction is, uh, uh, I was here spirit, but not present. They had me marked as present. And I don't think they have a merit mark. Oh, I'm not sure if he was present or absent, but.
I just asked.
The first part, the first part seems to be there. So I wouldn't know much about the other parts. I know that, that part, I know.
Could we correct the typo through your motion?
Correct the motion to correct the minutes to reflect what the plan is doing.
Uh, yes.
So I was thinking about it. Now with the new correction of the minutes, the information of the story that they are actually giving you will completely consent. And all the primary discussion, all the failure. Thank you. Uh, I guess you all voted here about Stan issues. You have anything else on your mind or speak to the forum about?
I don't think so.
Okay, so seeing you go on here to speak, we'll uh. Get going down to the mayor's report. The uh, thing that I have ahead, what we talked about, I mentioned at the work session is that. Uh, the chief Javier and I, who else was in on that meeting with Jack was here. Uh, my two this year participated in the national light out of Melody, it's here too. Uh, national light out, uh, event, which is happening on August sixth, it's a Tuesday, five, six to eight. We're gonna be using the parking lot next to the Boys and Girls Club and the uh. There will be a police vehicle, sir sheriff, department, a rescue vehicles, fire truck, food vendors. And I didn't loop you in on this because it was just something the chief of what the. So that's uh, it's gonna be August sixth, six o'clock, and it's just a night out, families to get out, maybe we'll talk one better and. Some places double thread of vials. That's pretty much it. If you have any questions of anything.
I wrote something about the spending, uh, donation, I'd like some explanation about that, how did that happen?
Yeah, I think Melody has all your action for you.
Um, actually, we have, we had two meetings. On Monday, May twentieth, we had a vote, um, everyone was here. Or we had community development group out from Boys and Girls Club and kind of unanimous vote. And the boys voted unanimously on that one. And then on six seventeen, that's my. Six seventeen, we also had a vote. Um, this was an actual to approach the budget as written, which included the three thousand for the Boys and Girls Club.
Additional authorizations that you were plus this year and the vote.
Were they separate votes?
Separate.
That's right. This way actually separate votes, one for the budget for next year and one for the supplemental appropriations for this year.
Right.
But then, oh, I haven't, so I never actually heard what they, when they were discussing what it was specifically for. I heard you get money possibly for a. To support now files, but I don't know if that was discussed or voted out.
Well, that was part of the allocation. I mean, that was part of the. That's what we voted on. So when we asked for supplemental approval of supplemental appropriation, I knew it was for those two items. It was for Boy and Girls Club and there was one other item for the.
Nine thousand.
That was, what they was out back looking for.
Um, the video rocked. I looked at the video because I know we voted.
I know we voted.
And nine of us and I was, I voted.
Well, yeah, the vote on June seventeen, which is when we voted to the appropriation was connected. The five and nine and three. Four to one, that was on Monday, and that was Mr. Heisen. Everyone else voted for it.
Without specify.
But it was, it's specified by what it's.
Yes, it did.
That was just prior to the voting and we voted for public conduct.
Yep.
Except in that it's all voted here, twenty four, twenty five.
Uh, twenty twenty twenty.
Something always happens at the end of the budget year. You got these appropriations and that approval tree is expenditure is like which does vary through the budget.
And then council and council in general, uh, twenty four, twenty five, council discussed with staff. They do honor ceremony process for this year.
For this year.
For the three thousand this year. I just want to check that that is at the various, uh, of course, I should.
And so that is the budget year coming up. It's uh, for community, don't assign profits for the next year.
And this was actually the motion to approve release of funds was made by Miss Morse and sent by Dan.
The other question.
Did I ask nothing here?
Really? I'll be perfectly honest with you, I haven't been to that ever since I was coming recently. Not familiar at all, you're maturely asking questions.
Okay, but and here's the way I remember things happening. And uh, I'm, I'm just filling this up there. Uh, we had a, uh, a blank law and then we had been conducting shit well for whatever. That was, you know, I was last year sometime, I remember. I talked to the guy in the room about how to move the. But so the point I'm trying to make is I can robust discussing removing the bureau. I don't remember us discussing replacing it with another bureau.
So we, I should have my own time, but we spoke in the spring, which I gave a heads up. That Stan was talking about the uh, murals.
Okay.
Replace it. And then we had a back and forth and I followed up with council that Army Corps of Engineers. Uh, now almost a year and a half had sent a letter. And then the way they put it, uh, was misplaced administratively. And then they sent that over essentially saying hey, uh, they have no concern in general about uh. Paint on it as long as it's not a cause of.
Okay, but when we don't want.
Uh, we did not.
So what was it? It wasn't a town expenditure?
No.
No. Okay, and who approved the design?
So.
Well, we had a sketch. Yeah. Yeah, they did get that, that was a scam.
Remembered. And then I reached out to council because uh, Council Heisen pointed out that I think I overset on that. And uh, I received mixed um, inputs on it. And then we can talk about it last month. But talking about it today.
You said that you had sent out an email on the form, major bill, including the sketch.
Yes.
Now, those were good to get.
Yeah.
And then, and then we had two, two workshops and two county council meetings and subjects telegraphed off. And then the next thing I know, you have a good painting.
Um, my concern is that I sent it out, I didn't get any response on that first email.
Well, wouldn't that be a red flag?
Yeah, um.
So.
Sent out the emails and not that I was.
So you sent an email out looking for input and there was none, so decisions made during the project.
What I could do is from now on, if there's.
No, no, I was gonna talk about, no, no, I'll, I'll talk about this. Is that the way you came down on how anyone basically?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, that's the point I'm making. When we have a project like that, uh, council needs to vote on it. Decisions don't need to be made by the administrator. Now, on the other side of the coin, um, and I haven't talked to many people, but the few I have talked to and half of them up to me are enjoying the bureau. And it needs to be an absentee and there's gotta be a response to it. So that's a great fact. I'm just saying the process is flawed and we got to avoid that from now on.
If that's the process of council that is.
We never voted on us, on a, on a, uh, to have a rule, we never voted on the, the orders sketch. We just showed it on the template.
We, we didn't vote on it, but we did discuss it, Eddie, because I remember Bill making a comment about lobsters aren't.
It was all on my.
Bill, we talked about.
We talked about.
I don't disagree, but I think Javier acknowledged that he, you know, he put out an email and say, I, you know, overstepped here, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm just saying we got to, you know, we, we talked about a lot of things, but we vote on things that go on the status. And so it should have been on the handle, but I think that's just my opinion. Um, like I said, it's been well received and I'm glad of that. So that's all, number one.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments about anything or you never upstairs before? Okay, Javier, sure.
Um, I think one quick update from this morning. Uh, county streets we came in today, so jam with uh. Jack Maxwell's help and of course with the police chief worked on putting the signage Friday. And they sent me an email earlier today that they were able to street sweep Valley, main. Bird Street, the Scottsdale Volunteer Fire Department parking lot and Scottsdale Street. Uh, I've been a little bit busy with car issues today, but um. JM updated me that it's the chief of ministry, so I trusted Valley, the vice that sent us. Um, but uh, just a quick update, that was today.
Was it the V dot machine or the count?
Count, V dot was before, uh, fourth.
You think we're all that's gonna do, we have of any sort.
I'm thinking there's an opportunity to ask again. Uh, since they're more than willing. Um, a piece of advice is it felt like both of those were relatively close to each other, but also for which lives pretty badly. Um, any piece of advice on when, like in the next period to ask the county to come down? Uh, would be appreciated.
Well, I know it's still, yeah, it looks real bad. And that like, oh, those things, it's something that could do the other streets that don't have first. I know there's machines that do that, like, no, like Paige Street, big like there's some street.
It's hard streets, street sweep streets that do not have.
Yes.
But they.
But I remember you guys get a special machine for that, I think. Kind of that one, thanks.
Let me ask.
A lot of streets don't have, those are the ones that are desperately.
Um, that's a little recent, I don't have any other, very, um, maybe worthwhile discussing. The ones that, but uh, Council Morse, uh. Police Chief Jenkins, Jack Maxwell and I, uh, we've been working on a P M O, uh, sorry, we didn't brands. Uh, looking at Friday deadline, we reported that out to town council last work session. Um, and we're just, we're still talking, Eileen is very much putting away at it.
Did you get it on either seat?
Um, I had the police chief today.
I thought, I thought right, but what about the rest?
Um.
We need to get those.
Prandey is checking in, so I'll probably send an email and see if he can answer me tomorrow about that.
Not going on trial.
And then I think I have a board that can discuss with the mayor, when at that point you fit uh. Two good uh, big figures. Um, and we're very set on another conclusion, so. Porchino was just getting a letter of conclusion, essentially a recommendation of it. Uh, but that's it for the now. Thank you, Castle.
Questions, come on here. Now, important, if you have anything for what you had.
Thank you.
Said anything exciting since the last?
We have not met this. So, ARV is Lambo.
All right. Danny is not here. The report itself, the planning commission, anything on the gifts?
Um, yeah. Signing the rain, we had a pretty uh, good fourth of July, still a good turnout, great music. Took a step.
I'm still there, yeah, still getting reports from vendors saying they had the best day.
Really?
Everybody's.
That said, they did so well. Yeah.
And that's because they extended hours.
Yeah, between the heat and the rain, I was really worried, but maybe we had a really, really good turnout. Um, red always draws a crowd, so that was exciting. Um. We have made a decision for that show festival, or at least next year, hopefully moving forward. Um. The, the. Two to, two to six is just not a great time for it. So between the heat, between the votes always being late, it's not dinner time yet. We're looking at uh, for next year. I just wanna think that way, people can see those, the food trucks all too better, the number of people who ready for dinner is just all for it. Um, our craft was on for August, same thing, heat, we're gonna actually push that out to October. And then we have our two events coming up in September. Veterans Day and uh, True Nature.
Founder's Day.
It is the Saturday after the actual Veterans Day, which I want to say is the thirteenth, but I can't remember. I just September fifth, February.
Any questions for Aaron?
I just can't hear anything. Uh, it's an offense for government theories and issues of games. Uh, we're still working on our website and discuss some functionality that can improve the website. It's a lot of work, not getting a whole lot of operations. The uh, the first student, the people who said they put site civic plus, so he's continuing to work on that so we can, you know, improve that. Uh.
I just wanna, I just wanna interject here, uh, I just wanna make sure everybody's clear, it's my meeting, not a contract with the club. There was a narrow agreement to petition with auction to support the existing site to the new site. There were a lot of benefits, government services was involved, everybody knew what had gone. So if we're asking them to do something different, that's above and beyond, so.
Well, there were a couple things that I think we asked, that have focused on supporting us. One is a search engine, one that's sort of search.
They want to search.
Search like the records that we have, do that, um, they have other places for maps and also maybe uh, to choose some training so we could.
We've had, and nobody showed up.
Well, maybe for training, because I, it was just a lot of training, nobody showed up.
And showed up.
And it didn't look like.
You weren't trying.
Well, anyway, we'd like to get some more sort of, maybe they give us a training.
I just wanna correct the record that they have, they are not on pre-charge contract, they did everything they were supposed to do. I got with them, it was perfectly fine, so that's my.
Well, anyway, putting it out, it's, it's, it's out of. There's some, some functions, some uh, things. Yeah, we'll say, we'd like to add, see if they can add that to it, otherwise we'd like to get another company to do that, because they haven't been.
Well, it's not added to it.
Well, so the search thing, uh, webs, uh, uh.
Where is this? What, which search?
I mean, search, they have a map, they have a scroll at the bottom to have, you know, to change, you know, announcements.
I mean, that's all things that we can do. But we, when we contracted with them, the lead common denominator was to have a template for the stuff. And we said we would choose from their templates. Templates don't allow for as much customization and will cost them stuff. So some of those things may be missing because they're not powerful, because they do this for multiple government institutions and they gave us the templates. And that's what they contracted to do, and that's what we signed up on the contract. So if we can't get banners that scroll at the bottom, it's not available there. It may be possible, it may not be possible, given their template, because if it's not in their template, we cannot get it.
So maybe um, staff and then government services, and we had even a commissioner, Angelon's also interested in working on it. Um, there is a portal and maybe it's time to again try to refresh up still on it.
Yeah.
Because we had a previous uh, staff member who didn't know how to do that.
Yeah, both uh, are curators and contract, contact with them both sides. And they've never done that.
They haven't.
Wait a minute, why is dots, is that appropriate? I would think that would come from town office, not from a committee member.
No, it's sort of self committed, so they, they.
He said, listen, I thought we agreed that as liaisons, things would come through us and go back. I don't think people should be reaching out to vendors without some kind of approval or. I mean, I would never go to a vendor without Javier knowing about it or sitting.
Oh, I'm. It was, it was a request to me, but now I'm concerned that um. I'm concerned about a direction now, especially this meeting.
Yeah.
Um, when I should move forward on items or not. Uh, I haven't been given clarity on how they interact with movie chairs also in that way. Um, but to, to government services credit, they did request, and I tried to next thoughts since I think he was willing to volunteer his time. Uh, but they've been a little bit dodgy, but now I'm a little bit concerned about clarity on what my world should be of administrator.
Maybe it's come to one of our meetings and uh, you got all that, the chief told me that was, I know it's contact email, but it would be good if you were. And they'll come to me and tell me what you can do. But then it's, it's a lot.
No, I'm, we're putting the council.
Right, right.
Uh, well. I agree with, I, I, I think. Staff should be the one, just so it's the same person all the time and the rest of council is more informed about what's going on. But I also just wanted to backtrack a little bit to what we were talking about earlier. Back when we were having the discussions about finding a company to build the website and everything else. I know, as it always is, you know, on our shoestring budget, that the cost was the making serve. That was, you know, finding the, finding the. Best option for the prices that we could afford. So I am a little worried, I mean, not worried, but. We, we did contract a certain web design at a certain price point. And I think we, we chose to forego a lot because of the price point and. I, I. Just it's, it's optics, you know, you, you don't want it like to, to say we want. Your, you know. The most economically reasonable web design and then they do it and then we go back and we're having them. About how come we can't do this, how come we can't do that? The answer is you wanted the most economical.
Right.
I, I just don't think that works.
And maybe that's.
I don't think that looks very good. I think it makes us look like.
Yeah.
We don't know what we're doing or we're unconscious.
I think that's very well stated, Perry. This is a contractual issue and I don't think anybody should be talking to vendors on contractual issues without you sitting on the table up here. That's my personal opinion.
I received advice delivered with contract, so I can follow.
Contract was purely a port of content that we had with additional functionality. It went out for a public RFP, we had three people, maybe more, but a free finalist bid. And it was mutually agreed that this was the best bidder and the best option for the town at the price. To ask them to do more is outside of the boundary of the contract. To say that they did not fulfill the contract would be not a good thing, because in my opinion, they did fulfill the contract in full.
Maybe you could get the contract to some particular thing. I do have some of the, I can show them. This is what we requested. Now, these, a lot of these things have not been done. Uh, there was always some of the things that we liked to get. Uh.
This is what we requested in the original contract.
And all they did is mostly what they did is migrate what we had before to this, some of those things we requested and, you know, they're laughing.
There was always a provision for a phase two and then we're very, we were very clear on which functionality would not be delivered in phase. And that we could win.
So you know that things could be done the way that you had.
It was a whole.
Do you have it? Well, no, we didn't, we didn't.
Oh, my goodness.
You, you, you.
No, we were invited to the meetings, you did not show, so don't get.
No, we wanted to do that, but seriously.
It was done in, I was in program services.
I know, but it was, it was, you, you better, we didn't know about it.
That's not true.
That's true, sure it is, ask somebody else. Who's, who's the town many contact?
Should be.
It should be, I ask who it is.
That's, that's like stocks. It's me with stock, so trying to finish stocks.
We need to get that. Okay, so you and stocks kind of make a decision, uh, as to when to contact these people.
But then it broke and we, uh, not yet.
Okay, that's a problem, like, oh, I, I have to call, we're paying them and we have a person that will be able to. Having said that, uh, I understand, you know, what a contract is and what Bill talked about is something old and above, where everyone agrees to. So let's take those concerns throughout designated, you know, people, you and stocks, go back to them and say, can this be done? Yes or no? And if there's nowhere to live with it, it's yes, how much is he gonna call them? Cause he's gonna call someone.
I have a feeling that a lot of these, we can do, it's a matter of knowing how.
Yeah.
Like, for example, update the events calendar. I promise you, if I sit down for ten minutes, I'll, I can teach you how to update the next calendar. But we, we don't need that for, for most of what's out here. Well, based on what we have already, we can do it. We can update the events counselor, we can add announcements, we can add a map, we can do, we can do all of this already. We don't need that for most of what's happening. Most of what's happening.
I've got enough.
Oh, no, no, you started, then it called out, so why don't you come along?
No, it was very clear, and I told the group that I will get the contract, get the site up in morning, but I will not be the webinarster. I am not going to be the webinarster.
We need.
Here, you and I were gonna take a drive tomorrow, I look at those signs.
And.
I, I. If you give me access, I, I don't have a username or password to get into it, but if you give me that, if you email me, is this, is this in a minute? Is this, is this what you sent us?
Uh, it's, uh, it's.
If you just send me that, okay.
I think it's a big part.
Maybe, if you can get a lot of that, but.
Yeah, it's fairly easy to, there's a few complications, but it's a lot better than the old two.
Counselor has due to logistics.
We're not driving around tomorrow.
Yeah, um. My, my, uh, my clerk, uh, is gracious enough, if I could provide some credentials and then, uh, both of you could sit down in the, uh, council chambers. I'm having car issues, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
But, uh, Melody can help me, she's at con tomorrow, and we suggest that, she has some of the information to sit down.
Yeah, the other things were, uh, I think, sorry, get a little, the minutes, uh, of town in its status. Family fashion available on the website. Um, and maybe you guys, I guess you gotta enter, and then we work with, we just, about, I did some minutes, uh, very early. And then the last thing, another, another thing was, uh, this has been a long time issue, is to establish office hours. And post them, maybe with the, the phone number outside on the door. Uh, people are holding, and I just myself, in there at night, or sometimes even at lunch, if people are away. So maybe if you want lunch, put, uh, the back of one, whatever, just some, some communication, communication with the town, about how it's, of course.
Let's sit on the phone and board out.
Well, no, no.
We might need to coordinate on hours.
Yeah, there's, and then there's that, and every sign's, like, she's flipping over today, she's gonna leave at Thursday at three or something, you say, you know, office closed at three or something.
And then, uh, what's the previous item?
Oh.
Right before that.
Minutes?
The women's.
Yeah, so last week we spoke with town council, um. Uh, I guess, commissioner, commissioner Angelina's helping us out two days a week.
Good.
Uh, starting last week and then, uh, our insurance been helping us out the last three weeks, so we've been concentrating on that too, since last week.
Yeah, I think once you get a system, uh, I'm in two days, and these, these guys get, we, we get, so, most of that, two days later. And they could help support you to continue training.
They talk about the service moves and the other parts.
We need, uh, parks are in good shape, but separate, so some roads and trains.
Any questions for Mr. Vice?
Um, not, not to tell you, as Javier mentioned, we're working on a media grant due on Friday, I've written, uh, the grant proposal. Javier is getting some supporting gap invitation together, I finished up the, uh. Project plan and the worksheet for that for submission, the chief has put in his edits as his job, so. We're pretty, we're in pretty good shape to submit by Friday. Javier, we should meet probably on Thursday, if you have time, just to go over, we should submit it together. So that, because the primary is you, you're the primary submitter, and I'm the secondary. So I just wanna make sure that you're aware, I mean, we went over all the responses this week, but I just wanna make sure you're.
Yeah, I'll send you an email to schedule.
Okay.
Anything else?
No.
Any questions for the force? Thank you, thank you, Forrest.
Um. The police department, Chief Jenkins, and, uh. His, uh, office, and, uh, delivery. All considered to be delightful to be all wrong success. I think they had one mile incident that didn't amount to much. Uh, they were pleased with coordination between, uh, uh. The town and the county ball as well, through the, I think, contract with other parts, something that, uh, is stale. So all in all, uh, they were exactly like, they felt they wanted to hold without any major, that's, and that, and that was good, thanks, so overwhelming, so.
So any questions for the thing? Right.
On the area of Tulsa, Josh, Josh in the planning commission. Um, during the June, sorry, during the July planning commission. Planning commissioners interviewed with Josh Peck, who I think everybody else is more well versed, but had their own full stream of involvement, local governor who was on council. Uh, they recommended out to town council, uh, Josh Peck, uh, tween, from the beginning. When, uh, we first had this vacancy boards, uh, for full clarity, we had about, you know, we had six interests. Three who were qualified, uh, one, also showed one dropout, and we were left with, uh, we had two candidates, but Josh was the only one who attended. Uh, last Monday, so I want to get that full clarity, the two that were, uh, who expressed interest, and we were, uh, Stephen Meeks and Josh Peck. Um, town council, or sorry, planning commission recommended out Josh. I think council may decide, which will, I'd like to look.
You know, this is a new rule, uh, not part of the Virginia code about selecting, I like to, you know, try to get this squared away. The, uh, the town council was responsible for selecting that, the planning mission. And I heard the planning commission had a closed session, and, uh, I've never heard of a, a planning commission having a closed session. And, you know, it's Freedom Information Act, you, you only have it for certain reasons, and, and personnel is one, that's not really personnel. So anyway, that was a little, the other thing is, I, there's no requirement for interview or selection. I mean, we should be doing interviews, we want to, and that, I don't, the planning commission shouldn't pre-select their own members. That kind of loses some objectivity, and I don't know how this came, I, I was on a planning mission for a number of years. We never, ever, and maybe you could ask some of the other people too, but we never had a closed session, and we never selected any members. They were just given to us by the town council, and we had to deal with them, whatever, because they, they were, you know, they, they're the ones who have the power. So anyway, I, I just think that whole process needs to be looked at. Uh, and maybe talk to Jim bowling about that too, because I, I, I don't think, uh, closed sessions are meant for planning mission. And, uh, they're not, if you look at their ordinance, it's, it's governed by, they can do that, and so, you know, I think that's, I don't know, I think we're. Not, not taking care of our responsibilities.
So reading appointees are included in that personnel, twenty, staff, and several, was the appointees, which a planning commission isn't a appointee.
Right.
Uh, and then for the record.
We're supposed to be doing.
We had a discussion, uh, last year, and, uh, we did not conclude with, uh. With the consensus, I put it that way, uh, that, yeah, we, we talked about this before, uh, we're kind of saying.
Yeah, I'm, I'm excuse.
I'll, I'll write to him and ask him about that, but I, I, I've been with Julius planning commission for years, I've never heard of any, uh, planning commissions choosing their own members. Would you like to put a petition forward? What, do you wanna put someone forward, because of those, into the, into the day? Well, I, I think, I'd like to propose that we, uh, needless until we get clarification from Paul, and also, also have to look at all the applicants. If there's applicants, we should be looking at them, it's not like, they, they looked at one applicant, and they set their own rules for an interview, and I think that's, uh. I don't think they can do that.
Well, Josh has been the councilman, runs the ARB, and he's been, he's run a.
Yeah, I, 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 yeah.
So if I remember correctly, we, we've spoken about it on more than one occasion, and I think. We've gone back and forth, in the end, we are still choosing, we can vote yes or no for it, you know, it, it does need our final approval on it, which is what's on here. But I, I think the, the majority of counselors. Self-confident and the, the commissions, you know, telling us this is who we would like. That this is who we think would work best as a planning commission, but we still vote for it, and I, I mean, I, I'm happy to vote that same.
And I want to be clear, they, they, what's paper of. I want to be clear, any appointments, council decision.
Yeah.
Um, you can always discuss this council if you wanna have an extra lawyer. Um, but, uh, again, it's a council decision.
Well, I'm gonna move to the point Josh back, this planning.
I would say.
You know, is there any, the, the second, any discussion?
Well, the other thing is, uh, that some guy, uh, he was, he was, um, he applied for, he, uh. He, he was brought because the person, they, I think we should have a changed part, I mean, try to get a policy about that, but he's still unestablished, and he was there appointed, but, but, uh.
But then also, and it was not, he took over, he wanted it, but he never came to the meeting, but they were, and he, he wanted it this time, but also didn't show up when they were giving the interviews.
But the, I'm saying, it's no, probably, but. You might have a policy.
I thought we did find that, that it should be, and it was an input form, and then the uniforms would get way, I thought, I thought, I thought. Government services made the form, yes. Yes, we both know, you, your committee made the form.
Well.
For the, for the application and the interview, and we voted on it, and you guys made them. Because of the amount of information, personal information that you need to collect and inform. Basically, so.
We have to get a few.
Yeah, and well, I love it, the last time when I had a form to collect information, I got the direction that I shouldn't be, because it's a nominee burden. So what I've just been doing is in my email recording now, when people reach out to me, I've been asking the mayor to fill in with information. I sent up information on qualifications and keeping that paper record, because I remember distinctly when I had a one-page form, uh, council said it was burdensome. So.
Well, I figure it's definitely, we have a motion on it. If it's the move was seconded, then we're not talking about forms right now, because blue was seconded to appoint Josh, is there any discussion on Josh?
Um, just not about Josh, but, uh, Mr. Meeks, I believe, was out of town for an extended period of time. Uh, when this meeting was held, so he was on the table, just like, you know, we, we have a castle on the table, because he's out of town, it's extended trip. So it wasn't, I don't think it was, because he didn't want to come, he just, you know.
Isn't it incompetent for a candidate to notify his organization, or be a member of all, that they're not gonna be able to be there because they're out of town, and is that any true?
I don't know, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
Reasonable person, dude.
Yeah, I'm not picking inside, be away, so I am saying, I'm saying it was.
I like Steve, I like Steve, he knows a whole lot of stuff, but if he doesn't bother to, hey, I'm just a nice thing, anybody that's forced a job or wants to volunteer. And then they make themselves unavailable, and don't let anybody know that they're unavailable, if they're way after the fact, then they know it's not worth it that day. And so we got most of our force, then seconded, any further discussion before we call for a vote? Call for a vote.
Alex Isak?
Yes.
Sandra, so. Mary Heim?
Yes.
La Heisen? And Morse?
Yes.
Ed Queen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Hi. Yeah, um. President, do you wanna talk about Stan again?
Sure.
We got the Stan lease, and after this, there's a separate thing, I've got a couple of comments to make, and, uh, see if we can, uh, fix the water.
And, well.
Um, ooh, after all of that, I'm gonna start with a happy little story, if that's okay. I can get surrounded by. Well, okay, a little, a little, it's comical, it's actually very sweet, but, um. Uh, I feel like a lot of times, because we're always in our own lane in town, and focused on the things that we're volunteering for. And, um, how we're involved in those specific things to make them successful, make them work, there's sometimes. A lot of times we're responsible, but sometimes there's not, and like, this hand doesn't do what the other hand is, is doing, necessarily, because this one is focused on this goal, and it's focused on this goal. So this is just a little story about, a few years ago, this was pretty pandemic, when I was teaching, uh, a theater class. Um, it was a partnership between Stan and the Boys and Girls Club, we partnered with often, and I was teaching age twelve girls, which was challenging. And, uh, a lot of them had no experience with theater before, but we did a project for the, we took ASOP's fables, and we, um. I had them split into groups, and they have to write their own, they were teachers on the ASOP people, and had to write their own script. For the fable, and then perform it at the end of the class, and so we worked on different aspects, um, script writing, costume making, uh. Prop making, and all sorts of games, and then they performed it, at the end, um, some of the parents came, and then, but also. Um, the, the senior at the time, the Boys Club came to watch the performances, and then at the end, I remember them asking the kids, like, what they, what they go. And this one little girl who had been my most difficult student for the entire two weeks, said. And it shocked me, she learned how to have confidence herself. And, and that, and that's like a lot of the type of work that we need to do, uh, with it. Like, we are, a lot of times partnering and working with other, and a lot of kids, uh, and adults, to establish a connection or experience with ours. Um, and making it accessible, and sometimes a small rural community like this.